All members are present today. So, I'd like a motion for the approval of the agenda. Motion?
So moved.
Dan, second?
Second.
By Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0. Consent agenda, these items are considered routine in nature and we'll be enacting these with one motion. The check wire transfer, the bank brick inciliation statements from November 2014, the approval of the school board minutes from December 15th, 2014, resignations, terminations, nonrenewals as listed, and the pay equity compliance report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Todd, second?
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0. Resolution for acceptance of gifts. Let's see, do we have any today? Sorry. We have requested board approval on these items, they don't all need to be read, but as they're listed in the board packet, I will need a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to approve, a motion to approve the resolution for acceptance of gifts as listed?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. Let's do a roll call. Chad?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
That passes 7-0. Next up is Laker Pride. We have special recognition tonight for the Minnesota State High School Award to activities director, Mr. Rodine, assistant activities director, Ms. Fuller, Jim Dwello, and the 719 outside crew. I think they're here. Some of them are here tonight. Okay.
We have two good luck moments tonight.
There you go.
As you all recall, this fall, we had some very inclement weather at the same time that our quarterfinals were happening with football. And the Minnesota State High School League asked us if we would be willing to host the semifinal, or the quarterfinals right here in Prior Lake. As a result, several weeks later, I received this very, very nice letter in appreciation of the work that your team did, that your team did, and that many volunteers, many staff members took part in to really present our district as a host location for... And in part, the letter says, "Hosting a semifinal football game takes extra effort in and of itself. Hosting a game at your site when your team is not playing is even more of a challenge. Keeping your facilities open and available, finding staff to work the games, and making many special arrangements is extra time and effort in and of itself. Add the extra challenge due to the weather created, the need for truly special effort on the part of your staff. The Minnesota State High School staff and Board of Directors want to recognize their efforts with the above and beyond normal expectations. Not only a job well done, but a job carried out with great attitude. The only goal was to give their very best to clean the field, bleachers, parking lots, and to host these games in the very best way possible. Mission accomplished. As a result, the teams and communities involved in these games had a great experience, one they won't forget." So we have a certificate that Stacy's going to read.
In recognition of their service of above and beyond expectation, the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors commends Prior Lake High School Activities Director Eric Rodine, his assistants, game workers, and maintenance staff for their extraordinary efforts in preparing their fields, stadium, and other facilities, and in the many other efforts extended in hosting the Minnesota State High School semifinal football game in November of 2014.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Wow. I told Doug I'd be quick tonight, so I'll try to be quick. No, you need to stand here. It truly was a great team effort, and Jim's crew was... We found out actually on Wednesday that we were going to be hosting on Saturday, and I called Daryl and Jim, and they were out there immediately, and we got that field cleared off, the bleachers cleared off, and it was an amazing success. So, thanks to everybody that helped out. Thank you.
Now is the time, the open forum. It's a 15-minute time period set aside for citizens to give their input through this open forum. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the board on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none. Personnel items?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Grover. First up, we have candidates for employment. And before I present those for the board for approval, I just want to note too that we do have Janine Peterson, who appears on that list, who's our, who I'm going to be recommending as our new Director of Food Services, and she would like to come up and address the board after you take your vote. So first, I recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the following candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0.
Janine, if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words, that would be great. And just beforehand, again, coming up to address the board is Janine Peterson, our new Director of Food Services, and we're very excited to have her on board.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, I'm happy to. Thank you, board members and Superintendent Grover. I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to be able to serve my community. I've wanted to do this for a long time, so I was very happy when this opportunity presented itself. I have a child who came up through this district, and I have another one who's in kindergarten. So, I love this district, and I feel like these kids are my kids. So, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to do what I love best. I have a passion for kids and nutrition, so thank you very much.
Welcome.
And next up on the agenda, I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the leaves of absence as listed?
So moved.
Second by Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0.
And next, we have a number of job descriptions. I would just like to point out that there really weren't any material changes to these job descriptions. Some of these simply reflect a title change that was actually voted on at the end of the summer, in fact. So with that, I present the following job descriptions for approval.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the updated job descriptions?
So moved.
Todd, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0.
And lastly, under employment, I am presenting a district retirement, and this is the notice of retirement that Dr. Grover submitted. And it's a little premature to, I think, give my reflections on Dr. Grover's leadership, so I'll save that for another day, and I'll hand it off.
I'd just like to make a couple comments. Dr. Grover's going to be sorely very missed in our district, and I'd like to thank her for all her dedication and service to the students, parents, and staff members here at ISD 719. Her leadership has made a huge impact over the last seven years, and will continue on for years to come as we continue with the 21st century learning and teaching, and continuing to expand our technologies in our schools for all of our students. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Grover for honoring the details of her contract by letting us know of her intentions to require well in advance, so that as a board, we have time to formulate a process in the search for the district's next superintendent. As a board, we're going to be discussing the details and making a formal announcement regarding our timeline at our next official board meeting on February 9th. And with that, I'd open it up if we have any comments. Yep.
First of all, thank you for all the hard work. I think the first thing that comes to mind is when I was privileged with filling out Chris Lynn's last few months of his term, I was very appreciative at that time, Dr. Grover, how you welcomed me in and treated me like I was going to be here for a long time, even though it was just a few months, and included me in everything right away, got me up to speed, and it felt like, more than just filling in for someone, I actually felt like I was part of the team for those few months. I really, really appreciate that.
What else? Rich?
I too would like to thank Suan for all her hard work and effort. And when I got your letter, I went back to look at some of my material that I sent out for the election when I was elected way, four years ago. And one of the things I wanted to do was improve STEM education in the district. We have done that now district-wide through the elementary buildings. I wanted to do work to improve student choices. We've done that with immersion, with FabLab, with OneOne Technology, college in the schools, and with the individualized learning areas in all the schools we have. And then I also wanted to have a professionally trained staff, and I think through QComp, we've working towards that area. So, thank you for making my job easier, and all your hard work, and you'll be sorely missed.
One more. Thank you very much. Also, I have a student who's just started in the district, and even though I'm on the school board, before I started, I was quite nervous about any schools. And coming here and after meeting you and everyone, I feel, felt good enough to enroll my daughter in Spanish immersion for the inaugural class, and that was an amazing feat for, you know, getting me over it. So thank you, give me, and I know a lot of other parents out there, confidence that they're getting the best for their children.
Suan, thank you. I know the last couple of years has probably been trying for you, but as board show for the last couple of years, I appreciate your help, your guidance we have through this district. I appreciate... It's interesting, because I too went backwards and looked back at my pamphlet I sent out back four years ago. And it was interesting, because kind of, I kind of said, "We know, we need to look forward to the future." And we did that through the study we did with Jim's group and for the buildings to bring them up to what they needed to be. And we found a responsible way for our district to do that through basically just really a no tax increase. We just extended it out with Julie's work on refinancing the bonds, and through your hard work through that. So with that, we've improved our facilities. I think we have a great plan for the years to come. We've got QComp started, that was a big thing. The addition to the high school went off rather smoothly. I commend you on that, Jim and Dave with your high school. The middle schools were trying at times. I think the first one was a little bit more trying with the flood, but you worked through that, and we then had the warm summer weather the next year or so. Thank you. You've been a leader of this district. We'll miss you tremendously, and I thank you personally for your help with me. So, thank you.
I'd just like to add too, I knew Dr. Grover, actually, I think I was one of the first people she met, was doing a tour when she first was named, and it was after our referendum had failed, and I was one of the chairpeople, and was signed up to do it again. And I kind of turned to her, and I'm like, "We got a lot of work to do in the next nine months." So, I mean, she kind of hit the ground running, and has had challenges all the way, but has continued. I mean, I think it's just amazing, has continued. I just look back as to what the district was like then, to what it is now, and it is amazing. And I think that's an accolade to her, so you will be missed.
Thank you. Do I say something? Or do we need to? Do we? Oh, do we need to? Should we permit this?
I guess we should approve it first. We may not approve it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the district retirement of Dr. Grover?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0. Suan?
Okay. Try to get through this. But you're sweet. I would like to take this time to thank you for the privilege that I have had, and I continue to have, serving as a Prior Lake Savage Area School Superintendent, the strong support that you as a board have provided for me over the last seven years. Being Superintendent of this district has been the high point of my many years in public education. I want to say publicly that I have had tremendous respect for you as a board for always staying focused on what is best for our students. I want to thank you for being collaborative, visionary, and supportive throughout every one of our decisions, and some of them weren't very easy. I will also miss working with all of our fine staff we have in each of our buildings who have been also very supportive, from weathering the challenging budget years to helping us make us a destination district for the families. They are truly inspiring, and each time I go in a building and I come out feeling like, wow, what an opportunity our students and our communities have to be able to be in a classroom with any one of our teachers in this district. I will also leave this district with many fond memories and positive stories of our students who work so hard each day to be the best they can be. I have no doubt we are preparing them well for their future. While I'm looking ahead, while I'm looking forward to my retirement in the coming months, I want you to know that I will remain passionate about my work here, and will continue to work diligently through June 30th to ensure a smooth transition for your next superintendent. My intention of announcing my retirement now is to give you the time you need to form a process to find that next person to lead Prior Lake Savage Area Schools beginning July 1st. I wish you continued success, and I look forward to learning of the new heights that you will accomplish in the future, both as a board, as a school district, and as all of us working together. Thank you.
All right. Any else? No? Okay. All right. Okay. Onto old business, and seeing none, we're going to move right on to new business. Okay. Resolution for supporting the application to the Minnesota State High School League. Mr. Rodine?
Hey, this is Dave. I'm leading the hall, too. Board members, Dr. Grover, Tucker, good to see you up there, Tucker. You're looking good. This is a grant that I'm asking for the Minnesota State High School League to help offset the costs of a captain's leadership program that we send our captains to in the summer, right before the start of fall season. It's Craig Hillier, who's a local person, but he does speak nationally. His one book, Playing Beyond the Scoreboard, is kind of the basis for the curriculum that he does. Last year, we sent 51 of our captains there, the first week of August. This year, it's on, this next upcoming season, it's on August 13th. So I'm just asking that you approve that, so I can get the application into the Minnesota State High School League.
We do this every year, don't we?
In one form or another.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And any discussion or questions on this? It's a roll call vote. So I need a motion. Do I have a motion to support the application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
Second.
By Dan, roll call vote.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Okay. That passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Paraprofessional recognition week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Governor Dayton has proclaimed the week of January 25th, and I believe I agreed the proclamation. But, okay. Here we go. All right. Whereas the week of January 25th, 2015, has been named Paraprofessional Recognition Week by the Minnesota Department of Education, and whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals who provide services in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction and individual students, student activities, and numerous tasks that contribute to educational success, and whereas the student and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to improving student achievement and increasing the effectiveness of Minnesota schools, and whereas the state of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognizing the role that paraprofessionals play in ensuring educational success, therefore, Mark Dayton, Governor of Minnesota, does declare the week of January 25th to the 31st of January as Paraprofessional Week. That's it. Great. Okay. Next up is the ACT/MCA schedule. Assistant Superintendent Hender and Principal Lund.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Grover. Mr. Lund and I have put a proposal in your board packet to review regarding ACT testing coming up later this spring. Just as a brief overview, legislation requires 11th grade students, all 11th grade students taking the ACT this spring, and that is a current graduation requirement for our juniors and future classes coming up. And with, in looking at that, that certainly, like other schools have started to look at, there are some challenges with that. And starting to looking at problem solving, the testing requirements associated with the ACT, so that we have a testing environment that meets the requirements of ACT, but also a testing environment that really provides the best environment possible for students to take the test. So we have a proposal in the board packet for you, and it also led us to look at other testing protocols and other testing sessions that we have at the high school as well, and specifically the 10th grade reading test. And so, the proposal in your board packet, would you like me to go, like us over in detail? Or would you like to just, are there other questions that you'd like us to ask? In essence, what we're looking at is a bit of a different, or a change to the school day. Go ahead.
We have MCA testing and reading, science, and math this year have to be done on computer. It's a three-hour test that has to be in a quiet environment. We only have four computer labs. With 32 labs in each, we would have to spread out that kind of testing over a five to six week period, which means kicking the classes that actually operate in those labs out for that amount of time. So what we're proposing with this is on the same day that we do the 623 juniors for the ACT, that we bring in our sophomores for their reading, 617 of them, in two different shifts, so we can put them in computer labs in the morning and the afternoon, and get both those tests done in the same day. And then we'll still have to spread the math out over a week and the science out over a week. But that, then, instead of interrupting in the computer labs, our computer, we don't have dedicated computer labs. Our computer labs are two business labs, a graphic lab, and the media center. So essentially, it's a way to get all the computers in, get the students in quiet, secure testing environments. With the ACT, you can't have over 30 kids in a room, and so our freshmen and our seniors on those days would have hybrid learning days. We have enough time to prepare to make sure they have work to do, and we'd bring our juniors in for a four-hour ACT test, using all our staff to proctor that test, and we would bring our sophomores in in two different shifts to do the MCA test, again, using staff to proctor those tests. Trying to minimize the curricular disruption over the quarter.
So, these have to be the hardwired computers? I mean, you can't...
Correct.
So they have to be, okay.
We have approximately, well, leveraging everything, I can come together with about 360 computers. We can't run school.
Right.
Because the bell can't ring, and people can't flow by my pod labs.
Well, one quick one. Is there any talk of getting rid of the wired requirement?
To be able to do it on Chromebooks or iPads.
The, with, working with a new test vendor, or the state is working with a new test vendor this year, Pearson, there's been discussion about using iPads in the future, but that's not a current reality this year, or for the foreseeable future. There is also a Chromebook solution for the MCAs that Pearson is putting out there for this year. There's certain, there's technical challenges to using the Chromebook to test, because in talking with Marcus, our Director of Technology, there are some logistical challenges to be able to, be able to make sure that the device is having the test on it in the proper format. But also, it led us to the greater conversation of a student taking a test on a hardwired computer is going to be different than a student taking it on a Chromebook. The other component, too, is although the Chromebook is a solution, for every Chromebook that we would use, we would be charged per device to use that Chromebook. And so, there's a financial solution to it that's not quite appropriate from our standpoint, but even the larger issue is we want to make sure that when students are taking the test, they're taking it on the same type of desktop computer, that we can ensure that the testing environment is consistent for all students.
Rich, you got a question?
Yeah. Which portions of the, do they take the writing portion of the ACT?
Yes, they will take the writing portion of the ACT as well.
Yeah, they take the, it's a four-hour and 10-minute test. They take the whole thing. With that test, they're not allowed to leave the classroom for that four hours and 10 minutes.
Melissa, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was confused when you said that they can use the Chromebook, but there's a charge?
Yes, for the MCA. That's correct.
So, a Chromebook could be used?
Correct.
In future years or something, but?
The, looking to future years, they're looking at moving away from that type of charge, but for whatever reason, I'm not quite sure, but for this first year, Pearson's solution is you can use a Chromebook, but there will be an additional charge to districts to use them.
And we have, we don't, again, we don't have enough to even do half the class, and the app on the Chromebook and the way they would be testing would be different than the hardware computer, and we don't want any student disadvantaged by being on one device versus the other, and the scores being...
We want everyone done the same.
Yes.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay. Questions? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion for approval of the ACT and reading/MCA testing proposal. By Todd, second?
Second.
By Ben? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Now onto policy. This is the second and final read on the last bit of policies that we did at the end of last year. Do I have to read these? Do I read them all? I forget. No?
I think we can just list them all.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, list them. Okay. Policy 714, district printing. Policy 720, vending machines. Policy 802, disposal of obsolete equipment and materials. Policy 416, drug and alcohol testing. Policy 407, personal safety. Policy 407.1, hazardous substances. Policy 803, security of buildings and grounds. Any questions on any of those?
One question on policy 802, section G.
Okay.
Oh, a second. About sale of two employees.
I gotta find it now.
Or obsolete equipment and material.
59.
G. Says that employees are now eligible to purchase the equipment, but then you removed all, all verbiage on how that's accomplished.
What we were doing here was updating this policy with MSBA format, and we reviewed all of this material in here, as my recollection, Stacy, and I felt that the, that the policy itself in this wording would, the guidelines would be followed. The guidelines of the entire policy would have to be followed for the employee to purchase.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Everything stated prior to this has to be followed.
Followed by the employee, as well as... There's not like a special deal or any, you know what I'm saying? It's just they're following the same procedure as everyone else.
Okay.
Okay. We can approve those all once.
Yes, these were all just rewording. Most of them are just putting them in MSBA format and adding just a few cosmetic changes to them, but nothing substantive that we haven't discussed previously.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the listed policies as is?
So moved.
Dan, second?
I'll second the motion.
Rich? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes seven zero. Okay. Onto administrative reports. Dr. Grover?
Yes. Just that this week is the Minnesota School Boards Association Annual Meeting. Executive Director Sink and I will be presenting on self-insures, self-insurance for one of the sessions on Thursday. And our new Director of Food Services, Janine Peterson, will also be on a panel talking about the implications, the impact of the new food, food guidelines, national food guidelines on snacks as well as school meals. So there'll be two different sessions, both on Thursday. Ours is to the 2:30 time, hers is on following that. We have several representatives going from the school board. Chad is going. Dan, are you able to?
It'll be a last-minute decision.
Okay. Last minute, depending on the weather. And I, and?
I will be there all day Thursday.
Wonderful. So we will see you there. Jeff and I will both be there, and Julie as well. So we'll look forward to seeing you at this meeting on Thursday, if not on Friday as well. So, that's what's coming up. We're looking forward to that.
Okay. Administrative reports. Anybody? Board reports. Student council, Tucker?
Yeah. So since, well, since the last meeting, we have just done a couple service projects. We did, we went caroling for cans, and we collected a lot of cans. I don't have like a number, but we collected a ton. And now we are just kind of moving on to planning snowball, but we haven't had very much school since the last meeting. So, we're just getting started with that, so.
Is that February? When is that, snowball?
That, that'll be, yeah, February, either the second or third week, we're thinking. So, we have to get it approved, so.
All right. Any school board committee?
Yeah, I have, I have one. Sue and I attended AMSD last Friday along with, I think it was probably 10 state senators and 25 to 30 House Representative members. So, quite a good attendance for the AMSD policy. Sue Ann has that, and we can forward that out to you, their, their platform for this year on what they would request of the legislature. Seeing that it's just a request, it is quite lofty in a couple areas. They are requesting a, a 4% increase on the general fund. Julie laughs.
Really?
Per year. So that's 8% over the course of two years. So it is quite lofty. There are a couple of the things, location equity and a few things that they have some proposals on that I think they'll come close, but they will not get their full requests. So it's, they're shooting for the sky and we'll see what happens. It was very well attended, a lot of good and lively discussion. It was kind of a question and answer session with the, a panel, Eric Pratt was on that panel of four legislators. So, it got lively at times and was very good, so.
Anyone else? I'll just note too, that same Friday, I was at SCALE, the Scott County Alliance of Leadership, and Jeff and myself attended that. And it was our month, I guess. We were both kind of new to it, but it was our month to present. So we just gave a little synopsis on the district and what's been going on. And it was good. I mean, it was, their legislative platform has a lot to do with roads and transportation. And then also flood relief, because there's a lot of flood relief and things that are still not fixed from last year's flooding. So that was their two real main areas. But we also had a lot of Scott County. It was good to see all the leaders of Scott County, because, you know, I can, it's a powerful group in Scott County, and I think, you know, it's a good place to be heard and, and be a part of. So, it'll be interesting going forward. Okay. If any of the new board members, if you guys need help with some of the meetings, scheduling or whatever, some of your committees, just let me know, and I can get those dates and stuff that are out in the future. Future events. The 21st Century Leadership at, Sue Ann already mentioned, the annual MSBA Leadership Conference is January 15th and 16th down at the Convention Center. We also have NO School on January 19th. It's a Staff and Service Day that day. Also, that day is the Teacher of the Year Celebration, January 19th, from 3:30 to 5:00 at Twin Oaks Middle School in the Media Center. And then our wildly famous kindergarten registration night, which is, I know, always a hop and night. All district elementary schools, so every school will have that on January 22nd at 6:30. And then we will also have our study session at the end of this month, January 26th, at 6:00 PM. At this time, it's time, we have a closed session to discuss a proposed expulsion. So I would entertain a motion to close the meeting. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Dan, a second? By Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, that passes seven zero. We are closed. Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the meeting back up?
I will make that motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
reopened. Okay. And do I have a motion for student one, action of expulsion? And a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
Second.
And Melissa, this is a roll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
That passes seven zero. Onto the second student. Do I have a motion for the resolution of expulsion on the second student?
So moved.
Dan, second?
Second.
Chad? Roll call. Chad?
Aye.
Ben? Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Seven zero. And then I think we're going to have a motion to adjourn, and then we're going to have a discussion in the PDC. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Dan, second?
Second.
Chad? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes seven zero. Okay. We're going to take a picture. Take a picture, and then we're going to move to the PDC in a minute.